Anyone? Alan? And if you could keep your comments, please. What's a reasonable number, Ben?
I don't know. Let's see how he does.
You're asking, Ben.
I don't want to start cutting.
Twenty-seven minutes?
I'm gonna make this, I'll make this really short. I'm very tired.
Twenty-seven minutes?
I had faith in him, so.
Thanks, Ben. Alan McKittrick, 235 Middle Hattam Road here in Portland. Also have been a member of the Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee and the Steering Committee. First of all, I want to just defend the Planning and Zoning Commission and say that, in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of a lot of people, they didn't drop the ball, Ben. I really think they did their job and they did it well. I also want to say-
We're not gonna go back and talk here.
No, and I don't wanna, and I just, that's just my opinion.
Public comment only.
Okay.
All right, those are the rules. Everybody agreed?
Okay.
All right.
Okay. That's all, that's, I'm gonna stick to the, stick to the topic. I had to get that in. What wasn't mentioned today, tonight, is that this is a $30 million investment in Portland. The figure $20 million was a previous number, but the application does state that this is around approximately a $30 million development in Portland. I think that's pretty significant. My second point is that I just want to make sure that people are, really feel comfortable, Kitch, especially you and Ben, about this, the concept that the, an apartment complex is really, in my mind, more of a commercial development than it is a residential development, if you really think about it. I mean, you've got landlord-tenant relationship, just as you would with a storekeeper. And I think it's very different. So I think, I'd like you to, as you think about this project, not exclude the residential piece and take it off the table, because I think it's a very different kind of a development. It's not a pure residential, single-family development as we have here. I think it's very different and it really is an investment. And I think the population within that apartment complex is different. It's different. I mean, it's gonna be very different. They are going to have fewer students in the schools. We can agree that it's gonna be fewer. We don't know how many. We can disagree on that and that can be discussed. But I think it really is, should, that kind of a development should be considered as a commercial development. And lastly, I just want to say that the Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee is very pleased that Fred and Dan have, over a period of time, past year and a half, really started from a position where we weren't even certain that the Brainerd House was going to be part of the mix. They came to the table with that. Sage House was, we didn't know. They came to the table with exterior stabilization and restoration of Sage House. And now the Hart Jarvis House. I think these are three huge steps that have enormous financial costs for the developers, but great, huge benefits to the town. And so, I, you know, granted it's historic preservation, but I think it's a very important part of that, of this development. And I think, and I think the, it's not just a philosophical debate that you should be having. It really is, it's gonna boil down ultimately to dollars. And I hope you take that, your role, very seriously in that. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next row? Anyone else on this side of the room? Along the wall? Okay. We'll start in the front row. Any comments in the front row? Jim?
Jim Tripp, 74 Middle Hattam Road. Just real quick, talking about the schools and the potential impact of this. I commented on this with the zoning board as well. When you look at the schools now, I have one daughter that came in when things were really kind of booming, which is when we decided to rebuild our infrastructure and how we sized our infrastructure. I look at my youngest, who's just a few years behind, and I see three, four kids per classroom less. That includes what we've done bringing in people from Hartford. There's only, there's not many towns in Connecticut that have seen any student population growth. Portland has seen a decline. When you take a look at the potential impacts to the school here, using that point three, you know, that 31%, there's 132 living units that would have two bedrooms that could support kids. That would mean 41 kids. That number was also talked about at the meeting. If you take those 41 kids and you concentrate them in only 10 of the 13 grades, that's, you know, four kids per grade. You have five classrooms sets per grade. It's less than one kid per classroom. The capacity's there to do that, based on the numbers that we're talking about. So that's not really a big concern, at least that I have right now as a taxpayer in town. And I think those are sort of reflected in the comments that were made by our superintendent. By all means, though, if there's a concern, certainly relay that question over to the Board of Education. And I'm, you know, I'm sure that that would be a welcome to take a look at it.
Thank you. Second row? Third row? Rick? Thank you for keeping your comments short. Appreciate it.
Rick Shaw, 168 Middle Hattam Road, also a member of Economic Development Commission. And I'll be, I'll be brief. First, just as a citizen of 42 years in Portland, I think the current proposal is far better and the town's getting more out of it than the initial one that was approved, where we were going to probably lose the historic structures on the property and we were basically gonna end up with a big box development. I also think that even if the 238 or 40 apartments get built and I'm figuring maybe an average of three people per unit, you're only talking 700, 800 total people in a town of 9,500 or 10,000. Actually, kind of think that might be a good thing. Get a little diversity in our population. And also, not everybody can afford the type of housing stock that we have right now in town, which is why I think we're losing a lot of our young people. They just can't afford to live in Connecticut. On behalf of Economic Development, we did not have time to have a formal meeting, but I met with our dear friend Elwyn Guyle this morning. And I'll just share a couple of his thoughts. Basically, he and I agree that we think some form of the tax abatement is a okay idea, that the Board of Selectmen should give it serious consideration. The BT, Dan's group, is making a huge investment in town, probably the biggest investment we've seen, or I've seen, since I've lived here. Elwyn liked the concept of a bifurcation on the tax abatement between the residential side and the commercial side, or the retail side, that maybe they should be looked at separately. We did not have enough time, we didn't have a full commission to really debate that, but that might be something you might want to just keep in the back of your mind or think about. He also felt that the abatement should definitely be tied to the Hart Jarvis House. I presume, well, let me back up. I got the impression from Elwyn, and I may be wrong here, but that the Hart Jarvis House was, the title was gonna be transferred to the town? And then it was also gonna be relocated on a small parcel that you were gonna donate to the town?
Yeah. He made a couple of references to those specifics that I said we need to create a use and then figure out from that use what the requisite parking approach is. There are many things that need to get worked out, whether or not it is to minimize or a slice. Some of that is governed by the zoning regulations and has to do with setbacks and things like that. You can create too small a piece and all of a sudden you can't build on any part of it. So we have to-
Okay.
-talk through that once we say, okay, this is the location for it and now let's work out the rest of the details. And that's why there's the collaboration that's required.
Well, okay. The point is, that's fine.
Don't get complicated.
No, no, that's fine. So the point from EDC was that the, that that Hart Jarvis House gets relocated and everybody's happy with what's gonna happen with it, and then it's okay to have the tax abatement, or some sort of, then-
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to get that-
That I totally endorse. The mechanics of it are, we need professionals to weigh in on how to do that intelligently.
Yeah, okay. So, in summary, I know it's late and everybody's getting tired, but basically, EDC would like to go on record as saying that we feel the Board of Selectmen should give this tax abatement discussion serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in that row? Mary Ellen Hetrick, 24 Cody Lane.
I'd just like to say I agree with Ben. I've lived in Portland for almost 30 years now, and I think we have been picking and choosing who gets come into Portland, who gets supported by Portland. And what are we gonna say to, like, St. Clements and other people who are saying, "I'm dumping a ton of money into your town. What are you gonna give me for a tax abatement?" It doesn't seem like, I mean, it seems like we're saying to them, "They're not important. They're not important because it's not as big of a project." And because we've never done it before, I think that you're setting a precedent, especially doing it for residential, that, what are you gonna say to the other people who come up and ask for a tax abatement? I mean, I, I'd like to see the area developed. I would like to see Portland grow. I would like to see all that stuff. It just seems like, I think we have been picking and choosing for a long time. I know there's been a lot of businesses that wanted to come to Portland. Northeast Molden Plastics, they went to Glassonberry. Gilbert and Jones, they went to New Britain. Like, there's been all kinds of businesses that we haven't supported to bring to Portland. So now we're gonna pick this one. What are you gonna say to the other people? I don't know. You know, I just, I don't know. It just doesn't seem like it's fair to other tax people who have been here paying taxes all along.
I just want to point out, though, that we did get applications and they were considered by this board, by the Board of Selectmen, as we received applications in the recent past, Mary Ellen. I can't go back-
Right.
...as you're pointing out. I just wanted to clarify.
Right. And I think it's important for you guys to pick and choose, you know, because if we are gonna bring businesses in that are gonna put out existing businesses, put them out of business, then, you know, they've been paying taxes here a long time. Do we really need three pharmacies for 10,000 people? I don't know.
Thank you. Next row? We'll come back to the people that have already spoken. Last row? Yes. Bruce?
What is up with this cuss? I'm sorry. I'll just bend down a little bit here. Bruce Morrison, 109 Stewart Hill Road, Portland, Connecticut. I'd like to just talk a little bit about the-
Take the mic off. Just take it off.
I'd like to just talk about the financial impact on this. I think there's a lot of good things seeing this developed and the houses being saved and everything else. And I think that's already been addressed with the zoning. What this board needs to consider now is a tax abatement. And a tax abatement is about money. And taxpayers care about money. So I'm here to give a little synopsis on some of the money, because I've kind of been looking over these numbers. And I'd like to kind of give them some to you, and hopefully you don't take the developer's numbers, you don't take my numbers, but go get some of your own and look at them, because this is what is gonna happen. I mean, we have revenue here, building permits and fees, one of the first things on here as revenue to the town. Well, the building department is gonna take a lot of work to develop this and go through the inspections and everything else, and the fire department and everything else. And just a quick thing from Ray Sajak, our fire marshal, in a letter he sent to the zoning board. "The impact on this office would be significant during the construction phase, as would any large project. Seeing the problems that we have faced with other large projects would require a special inspector to assist with the construction and the inspection phase." So already, this is one department is saying they're gonna need more help. So to consider the building permit and fees revenue, you can't take that as revenue because there's expenses associated with it. What the town needs is revenue, net revenue, not gross revenue. We could get a construction building in here and get somebody to say, "Yeah, we're gonna give you $100 million a year." That's great, but if it costs 105, it's not that great. So we have to look at the bottom line. And, because that's what the taxpayers, because when the bottom line doesn't work out, taxpayers pay for that. So the next thing is water and sewer, which it's a pass-through. And it has to be, just because of the way the town is situated. Not every taxpayer in this town has city water and city sewer. I have a house, I have a well, and I have a septic. I don't pay water bills, I don't pay sewer bills. But my taxes are going through an abatement for somebody who is gonna lower the water and sewer bills if somebody that lives on Main Street. Those are independent. Taxpayers are universal. So we can't pick and choose, say, "Oh, we're gonna help out the water customers," but what about the guy that's giving the tax abatement that doesn't have city water? So that has to be stricken altogether for the reasons that were talked about earlier and right now, because that's just a commingling of funds between sewer and water customers and non-sewer and water customers. So that's not revenue to the town. That's the pass-through entity. So that brings us down during the abatement period to two things. Vehicle property taxes at $482,000. And this is over the nine-year period with the paperwork that was put up there. Vehicle property taxes, that's the kind of revenue the town wants. That's great. Doesn't cost us anything. All we gotta do is send a couple of bills out and a little bit of collection. So that's the revenue that we're looking for. That's great for the town. Commercial contents of properties, $330,000 over the nine-year period. That's another great revenue. Somebody have a widget on, in their store, doesn't cost the town anything. We don't have to do anything with it. We just collect tax dollars on it. Great source of revenue. Commercial properties tend to generate that. So if we take that over the nine-year period, it comes out to $812,000, okay? Which comes out to $90,222. That's what this town is gonna receive, $90,222 per year, okay? So, and mindful that developer, not one penny of that's coming out of his pocket. That's all taxpayers and tenants and people who are leasing the commercial offices. So if we take that and we go back into the issue with the schools and the students, there's gonna be an increase in students. We can go back and forth on this all day long. But what we also have to think about is, the cost of educating a student is the Board of Education bill divided by the number of students. We can add Johnny and Jane to the classrooms. We can do whatever we want to do, but just because we have room in the schools right now and we figure we have an economies of scale, it's not fair to predict what's gonna happen a year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now. There could be another development like this. We could have another huge housing development, the things could boom. Then we need to build another school. So does the fact that we have room in the classroom now affect us 10 years from now? So now, all of a sudden, 10 years, and we need to build another school. Now, we're building another school, now is this the next student that comes to that school? Are we just gonna let him come and not impact the town? This is not a short-term thing. This is a long-term thing. These things are not going away. So the cost of educating a student is the budget divided by the student. I mean, it's, you can't just add to it, because then what happens when you add 15? Do you add 15 more? Does the cost not go up because we can absorb that? At what point does that say, "Well, you know, we just can't keep adding students"? Of course, because there's a cost. So there is a cost there. And I would hope that, you know, these things are investigated. I mean, even if you take 41 students at $12,000 a year, that's $492,000 a year, every year. Mind me, we're only getting $90,222, okay? So then we have to take into fact, do we need another police officer if we add 6% to our population? Probably not. But again, let's say, meh, we have another apartment building that goes in here, we have some of the houses get developed, and all of a sudden, yeah, the 6% increase in population wasn't enough to require another police officer. But we added another 5% or 6%, and now we have a 10% increase, and say, "Wow, now we need another police officer." So let's just figure half a police officer, a quarter of a police officer, but there's an expense there to the town, because you cannot add people. And I will quote from Ronnie Malardo's letter that he sent. "I believe that adding additional housing at the Elmcrest property will increase call volume. This will be typical for any housing development that would be constructed. The exact impact to our apartment is not, at this time, is unpredictable." Unpredictable meaning, how much is gonna go up? Because nobody in their right mind would think that adding people would create less volume of calls. It's impossible. So he's saying he doesn't know how much it's gonna go up, how many more calls they're gonna get. So he has told us that there is gonna be an impact. He just doesn't know what it is. And we couldn't expect him to even figure that out. I mean, that's, you know, even somebody with a, you know, that knew how to do that research or whatever else would have a hard time predicting that. So that's the police department. And now, the biggest one that I worry about is the fire department. Our fire department right now is basically having a hard time needing calls. Robert Che, he sent the letter to the zoning board and said, "The most difficult and challenging part for us as volunteers is to predict the impact that the additional housing will have on our volunteer department. We've had difficulty handling our daytime calls as it is due to the majority of our volunteers working during this time. Currently, the department responds to 1,200 calls for service a year. We have implemented mutual aid agreements with surrounding towns to assist if needed during this time. However, these agreements are to be used only as a last resort, not as a permanent solution. Requesting these resources into our town puts manpower and financial burdens on those departments. It is clear that an increase in population as currently proposed will increase our volume of calls. Understandably, along with our desire to increase economic development, the town of Portland must remember when making decisions that public safety will be affected. The changes in our department's ability to cover the requests for emergency services based on population increases will need to be monitored and necessary changes made to secure the protection of our citizens. These changes may result in additional costs for fire and EMS coverage to taxpayers." So the fire department could get into a situation where we may have to, if we keep increasing our population, and this is just one step, and this is not, this may not be the straw that breaks the camel's back, but as a board thinking about giving a tax abatement, we have to think about the possible cost of going to a paid fire department. Glassonberry has done it. Westfield District has done it, you know, where they have to, they can't respond to the calls during the day, so they have to have a paid fire chief, and they have to have four people during the day. And that's something that Portland may run into. So that's something that you have to think about, you know, if we're gonna be giving away money or spending money, that this is a distinct possibility. So, and that, I can't even quantify financially. But what I'd like to say is, just kind of looking at those numbers, I mean, if we take half a police officer and we take, you know, $12,000 per student, and we figure out those numbers, it's gonna cost the town $546,500 per year, at a $456,278 per year loss. So what's gonna cost the taxpayers? If you take that over seven years, it becomes $31,193,946. So that's what the taxpayers of Portland will be paying before we receive our revenue on this. So if you take that, in the first nine years, we're gonna lose a little over $3 million. If we take, at the end of the abatement period, the property taxes and the vehicle and the contents taxes, it comes to a little over, it comes to $933,522. We subtract our cost of $546,500, which, again, is conservative, because we haven't figured anything in as far as fire or, or we have for fire department or any other sources that we may need. So the $546,500 per year, and that's gonna net the town $387,022. So it's gonna take us another eight and a half years to just cover the cost of the abatement period. So the town of Portland's not gonna receive any revenue from this development till the year 3000, to 2034. That's a long time. And that's not even putting in context the time value of the money, the dollar we're spending in year one, two, or three, because we're not gonna really get our revenue for nine years. So I don't think the town should have to, you know, pay this kind of money and look at this kind of negative income for this long, for this development. And if you look at it, I mean, which nobody's really spoke about, I mean, we're talking about, you know, a $30 million project, which is huge. But if you look at the tax revenue that we're gonna give for a seven-year abatement, at $5,903,000, it's almost $6 million in tax abatement, which is 20% of the cost of the project. So, yeah, of course the developer wants to get 20% of the cost of the product subsidized by the town. I mean, it just kind of makes sense. And if we're gonna give away $6 million of taxpayers' money, I think it should go to referendum. I mean, it's just, it's a huge amount of money. And I just would like to run a couple of those numbers, and if anybody has any questions, I'd love to, you know, answer them or whatever else. I mean, and I just, like I said, I don't ask you to take my numbers, but look at these. These are things that have to be looked at, all these departments, all these things, because once this goes through, we give an abatement, we can't get it back. And then we're gonna have to pay these tax bills, you know. We're not gonna make any money till 2034. So, thank you very much.
Fred, did you have something else? Brief, please? Because you've already had an opportunity.
I'm Fred Hassan, owner of the property. My age has been referred to here, so it reminds me of a story in regards to Bruce's number. These three sailors check into a hotel room. And this is when the price of a hotel room, he charged them $10 apiece. So that was $30. The manager comes by and he says, "Oh, I see you checked in three sailors. Three sailors in one room, you should have only charged them $25." He says, "Take this $5 and give them back to the three sailors." So the clerk is going down to give them back. He can't figure out how to split up the $5 evenly, so he says, "Well," he says, "I'll give each sailor a dollar back and I'll keep $2." So that means the sailors paid $9 each, times three, that's 27, and the $2 that he kept is 29. So what happened to the other dollars? That's a little bit like Bruce's comparison here. I mean, he's a little bit off-base, probably a whole lot off-base. As to Brian, right? I'll let you look at the tax return when we sell this property, see if we're making any profit. I'm trying to do something in the spirit of the doctors. We're not trying to maximize anything here. We're trying to do something in the spirit of the doctors. If we can't do that, right? And I'm not around, I don't know what'll happen, right? So it isn't that you're giving something away because you don't have it. You're gonna collect excess funds. You can't just pick certain items off of that list. You've completely overlooked $141,000 a year in property taxes on the land, right? So Bruce's numbers are way off in left field. We're not making a killing on the property. There are other ways to maximize the profit, right? We're trying to do something in the spirit of what was Elmcrest was all about, right? If we can do it, we'll do it. If not, there probably be nothing there. And 10 years from now, we'll be talking about the same thing, instead of having gone by the period and you're collecting $1 million a year. And over 100 years, because these buildings last 100 years, right? So under one method, you collect $100 million over a 100-year period of time, and another way, you collect $93 million over a 100-year period of time. So we gotta sit here and worry about $7 million over 100 years? I think it's, the answer is well-known by you folks.
Thank you. I would like to move on to item B, which is land donation. Okay, thank you, everyone. The next item under new business is land donation. Property located on Maple Avenue, MAP 11, Lot 6. And you were aware of this previously, briefly. I had mentioned to you that there is a parcel of land on Maple Avenue to be donated to the town. And the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this property, which is owners Arthur and Mark and Deborah Field, Beverly Pierce, Lori Colgett, and Steve Carterelli. Assessors MAP 11, number Lot 6, Zone FP, which is floodplain. And the reasons is the acquisition of the parcel is consistent with the planning goals of the town, which Planning and Zoning agree to. The only thing that the owners have asked is that the town, at some point, put a marker up that would indicate some history of this site. They talked about having it either near the land or near town hall. This was pasture land that was used by their ancestors many years ago. It is contiguous to 23, excuse me, 28.3 acres that the town owns below- owns below Nolan Field. And Nolan Field acreage is 5.79. The amount of acreage is 24.8 acres. So, I would need your permission to proceed with some additional dialogue with the families that are interested in donating this to the town. So, I'll open it up to the selectmen.
Does this go further down, Susan? Does this map, I don't, I'm not sure if the...
I think it's to the river, Ben.
If the southern border, so it would be on another map also?
Did she put it on here? It goes to the river, as I understand it.
It goes to the river.
That's as I understand it.
That's, that would be my guess, but map 11 cuts it off. I wasn't sure.
Okay. I know that the 28.3 does as well.
Okay.
And this is contiguous to that. And it was used by, um, the cattle that lived in Middletown, so they used to come across and use this parcel for pasture.
And now that I've seen it on a map, is this far enough that it had nothing to do with the original dump down by the other field?
Not that I'm aware of. It's next door to this parcel, and the indication is that it was used, um, by cattle. Um, that's the only use that I'm aware of.
Wetland in there?
Yes, yes, floodplain.
For the record, just, for the record, I, I used to own lot number, I don't know, it says one or two, it says both numbers on it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think that's gonna affect...
No. Not in my mind, it doesn't.
Thank you.
For the record, I need to disclose that I know some of the owners.
Okay.
Okay.
I know one of the owners, too.
Yeah, small town.
And I've met another owner that lives out of town. Um, very, very generous donation. I think it's, um, it's not land that we're going to be developing, but it's land that would be preserved next to land that we already own.
Yep.
And along the Connecticut River, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Will we accept the donation?
Thank you. Is there a second? Did you hear? Did this end of the table here?
I, I did.
Motion made to accept. Is there a second? I'll second it.
Uh, after Ben, I have a question.
Yeah, my, and that's where I'm at. I'm not, I'm not, I, I, big picture, I like the idea. I just wanna double-check, I don't know if there's a way to just make sure, um, we're not taking on any liability to the town, like if, I don't know, like a quick title search?
If you wanna spend, if you wanna spend more money, um, we certainly can. This is a donation. If you wanna do a phase one, you can do that. Um, I don't know that you're asking for that.
I don't think, I don't think we're up to a phase one. I think we're up to a title search, just to see, um, what the, who the...
I would agree, Ben. That's something we would have to do in order to accept. I would agree with you.
I would wanna know from the title search, for example, if it was owned by a chemical company, that would put out a red flag, then I would want a phase one.
So, you're authorizing me to do a title search?
I, I think they're cheap enough, and I think it, we owe it to the taxpayers, and I think there shouldn't be an issue here, and then we, I, I, I love the big picture.
Would the motion be contingent on the title search, and maybe bringing it back to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll bring it back.
Fred had a question, too.
I would just like to have consensus to move forward. A motion made by Kitch to move acceptance of a title search to be done on the property?
Correct.
And I seconded that. Laura?
Motion to...
To proceed with a title search of the property. Seconded by me. Does that sound reasonable, selectmen? Okay. So, that is what the motion was directed?
Just a general, a general comment.
That's the, that's the motion.
Thank you.
Fred had one.
Yes, Fred.
General comment. I just, yeah, generally, open space and, and, um, all four. I ju, I just get kinda concerned about, um, and it's really not applicable as a larger piece, but the whole policy of taking, uh, taking parcels of land, uh, and just make, and Ben pointed out the liability part, and I, um, I get concerned, too, about things like dams on rivers, for example, uh, little dams that are on rivers, and response, who has responsibility? So, I, I just think that, that maybe we should, at some point in the future, take a...
There's no dam on the property?
No, no, yeah. No, no, I'm just talking generally about, and I'd like a discussion, I think, about how we go about this.
Sure. That's why it goes as an 8-24 to the board, I mean, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, in terms of our plan of conservation and development, they find that this is consistent with the plan.
Yeah.
So, you're right, we do need to do that, and we are following that procedure.
Yeah, Mike, I, as I said, I, I, I've seen situations where towns have the responsibility, they've accepted property, and I mentioned a dam, there was a dam on it, and they were under orders to take, spend, you know, thousands of dollars to take to correct the dam, or take the dam down. So, there are unintended consequences sometimes, unless you do your due diligence. And the, the small parcels, the other thing, a lot of times, who, who takes care of that parcel? You have a little subdivision, there's a half an acre that's open space. Then you get into the, who, who cuts the brush, who takes care, you know? And I just think we oughta have a discussion, that's all.
Well, this is contiguous to other property that I can attest, we do not go down and mow, and we do not maintain. This is floodplain along the Connecticut River. Um, so just so that...
No, this I'm not worried about. I'm just talking generally, Susan.
Yeah, right. But I, I'd wanted, just to point out, in case listeners are, are thinking that there is, there is additional information that, that, um, that I didn't disclose, but there is not to my knowledge. However, we will do the title search if the motion passes. Are you ready for the vote?
And could we bring map 10 and the ones below it for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Just so I can see, big picture, I think, I think, um, and once you do the title search, we can see who owned it, and we can...
Yep.
Uh, make an educated decision based on that.
Okay. Are you ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? And thank you for the discussion. Motion passes.
The next item is, um, something that Fred had asked, uh, excuse me, no, update on flooding. Uh, I should say storm water damage, um, to the town. As you may be aware, we had quite a storm on Thursday. And I wanted to give you a brief update, excuse me, of the storm damage that occurred Thursday, August 11th, in the town. Uh, at Brownstone Intermediate School, we will be needing to put in new cabinets, carpeting, and baseboards. Um, hopefully, this will be accomplished by next week. And I'll preface the, the, that, as well as the following, um, with the fact that Kerma, our insurance carrier, and JP McGuire, who was hired by them, is overseeing and will be paying for this work as we proceed. There was some damage to classrooms, damage to the woodshop, damage to the garage, and damage to Paul Bankston's office at Brownstone Intermediate School. At Portland Middle School, located at 95 High Street, there was some, uh, water, storm water damage at the administrative offices. And I can give you an update on that. Um, it is not dry yet, but they are working on drying out the administrator's office at Portland Middle School. Uh, the Buck Foreman of, on 265 Main Street Police Department downstairs had some storm water, as did the Plaiscape located behind the Buck Foreman. Mulch was lost, and we will be replacing that through the Restoration Services. We'll also be having that power washed, so in case there was any, um, contamination by storm water and so forth, so that'll be done. The building maintenance and supplies and equipment at the Buck Foreman, there were some, uh, listing that we'll be doing so that we can get that restored. There's also some, um, file storages that are being dried out at the basement of the Buck Foreman. And there's minor damage to some supplies at the garage located behind the Buck Foreman. Um, at the senior center, at 7 Waverly Avenue, storm damage, um, in the basement, I can attest, I was there. Um, there was quite a lot of water that came in. Uh, drywall is being installed, and painting will be next. There was some damage to the food bank. Rick, is that opening tomorrow?
I recommended that it wasn't, and I saw Ruth Mayo and her husband coming out, and they said it shouldn't be going in there, but somebody else said, "Good to go." I sold him to give you a call in the morning.
Okay, so...
Could we take his stuff out tonight?
So...
The elevators, we got the elevator people coming, the elevator doors partially open, we're trying to get it aired out, so we haven't done anything to the floors.
We did have Chatham Health District, um, consult with the food bank, so in terms of the quality of the food, that has been determined.
Food is fine.
And the food is fine.
The access is not very, well, it's not...
Yep.
Ruth said she was gonna try it, and this is her...
Well, they're very responsible in terms of making sure people are safe, and I'm certain they wouldn't allow people to be in the areas that would be deemed unsafe. So, um, knowing that Ruth's been doing this for over 20 years, I think she's very capable of making good decisions, and she may, um, not be able to open it, but I certainly hope and...
They, they were coming out the first time they looked, when I was arriving here. We spoke. They're very good, they're very conscientious.
I think they're, they're, they're okay. And, you know, I'm su- certain that there are some people that may be depending on the food. I don't wanna preclude them from getting necessary food that they would need to have.
And we should thank her, she does a nice job.
Yes. Yes, Kitch.
Are there other places? Because I had heard something about...
Yes, continue.
Okay, okay, I didn't, I thought maybe you were...
Fortunately, unfortunately, you are correct. Um, Chatham Court is not owned by us, as you know.
Right.
Uh, but the Housing Authority did report, uh, substantial damage to a number of apartments down there. And I had a call to my office, and frankly, I haven't had a chance to get back to them. And, um, there were some concerns, uh, in terms of the residents there. Uh, the building official has been alerted, and the fire marshal and the building official would need to determine whether people can be moved back into those apartments, or shouldn't be. Um, I haven't gotten a report from the building official. Have you gotten a report from him?
No.
No, so I will be checking that tomorrow.
So, how many people are displaced?
I believe they're still there, is what I've been informed.
They're there, yes. So, will the Health District come out and check there as well?
Yes, they should be.
Okay.
Yes. But it's really a building official matter.
Uh-huh.
Um, I believe. But, um, I will check with, with Lincoln White, our building official, um, to see if he's also in, in, his, his office is right next door to Chatham Health District and our offices, so he will be conferring with, um, with her as well. Um, there is a retaining wall located at, it's either 25 or 35 High Street. Um, there has been a purchase order issued to pay for the brick, and our insurance company will be assisting with the installation costs associated with the redoing of that store, of that wall, that retaining wall. Within Town Hall at 33 East Main Street, the air conditioner, um, was no longer functioning properly. It is still broken, and there was some damage at the Board of Education offices in the ceiling due to lightning damage. That was not due to storm water damage, but there was, um, some, some effects from the lightning.
What's the 35 High Street, Susan?
Um, you're going up High Street, Ben, from Route 66 on the right-hand side, um, there is a retaining wall. And Rick, uh, you had written 25 High Street.
Between Foley and, uh, on the right side. John Reno, what John Reno is, it's down. We got calls around.
Sure, okay.
I'm sorry.
I, I wasn't sure if we were talking about that little storm grain at the end of the sidewalks, I was gonna say, use this opportunity to change that.
No, that's a whole other, whole other story.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, this was some...
That's where I was going with it.
Wow, that's...
Yep.
I wa, I just wanted to give you an update on that, and we'll continue to update you on that. Thank you. Thank you.
Is insurance covering all the damage to our buildings?
As far as I've been reported, yes.
On that wall?
Yes. We, well, we had already, um, purchased the block, correct?
Right, and they are covering that. We also had damage in Corey, Corey Lane, and they put the bathroom repair, and we got bad wash up there. They were very good, went around with the adjuster on one day.
I called them while the storm was going on, and they were there, um, I think at dawn the next day.
That was a lot of rain.
Yes.
It was a lot of rain. It was a lot of lightning.
Yes.
The small pipe house on Freestone, it floods, or flooded when it was in foreclosure, is, is that, did that create any problems for us, or is that...
It's not our problem.
Tried reaching that gentleman the night it was raining, I couldn't find his number. I have not yet heard anything from him. Each, each person has purchased the house. He's aware of the problems that exist, and, you know, just a vague...
Caveat emptor, huh? I or B one.
I can almost assure you it wasn't.
Sounds like it's not our problem, so we'll...
Yeah, as long as it's not our problem.
We'll move on, Ben, to letter D, which is sidewalks, and Fred Nauset asked for this to be on tonight.
In deference to Attorney McQuade, I'll take one minute.
Yes.
I think sometimes we can do things quickly, occasionally. Sidewalks. I had a, a couple things. One thing, if you haven't, um, had a chance to look at the Connecticut By the Numbers report that Susan sent out, a two-pager, take a look at it, if, if you have it on your email. Because I, I, what, what it does is it gives a kind of a snapshot of other towns, and, and I was actually surprised at the significant number of towns out of the 131 that, that actually have sidewalks, because there are quite a few without them, that, that have a policy that requires a town to maintain the sidewalks, or, and there's a caveat, an additional caveat, or, uh, one of the significant, uh, additions to that would be to have a, a sidewalk zone around schools where, um, which is what, one of the things we've been talking about, and I'd like to see us seriously, uh, discuss.
Fred, are you talking about state sidewalks? Is that where you're...
I'm not, I'm, uh, this...
The town is, is, is taking care of the sidewalks, you said. You're talking about state sidewalks?
Yeah. A, a town takes care of the sidewalks, a significant majority. I think it was 58% of the towns that have sidewalks, the town takes care of all of them. Then you have all these caveats also in other towns, like they have a school, you know, where the school zone is, town takes care of it, doesn't take care of the others. Or if there's damage to the, uh, the, uh, trees, cause damage to property owners, the town takes care of it. We do some of that, I know, I've seen Rick, uh, doing that, which is the right thing to do. If it's a town respond, town tree, uh, that's causing all the problems, then the town is, I think, has responsibility. But anyway, I'd like us to, uh, you know, to have a, kind of a serious discussion, particularly since we're gonna talk about bonding, and whether we're gonna spend a little money for that. And I look back on the Plan of Conservation Development way back to, not the last one, back to 206. And the first two things on, uh, one of the pages, enforce the existing sidewalk maintenance ordinance, okay? Nobody's gonna raise their hand on that one, I don't think. I don't think we'll see anybody, uh, making a motion to enforce that ordinance. Uh, and then the second one was, develop a sidewalk improvement program. And so, it's been going on a long time, discussion about sidewalks. It's part of the infrastructure, and as I say, maybe next time if we take five, I talked to Michael, and he's out of town, but if we take five minutes next time, Susan, and just so we know, then Rick will know also, you know, where we're gonna go with this.
On the 30th.
Pardon?
The next time we meet will be August 30th.
Okay, good.
Or tomorrow.
Oh, I do it.
We'll be continuing at midnight.
Fred, just for, just for clarif...
Just for clarification, it was three minutes.
When you, when you use the word maintenance, do you mean to repairs only, or do you mean to, um, actually maintain these? Like, is Rick gonna be putting guys in Bobcats and snowblowing them in the winter?
No, no, we don't do snowblowing. No, we're talking about the, the physical part. We don't get into snowblowing and shoveling.
Just checking, just checking.
Not at all. Don't wanna do that.
And Fred, just so I understand you, so, so it would be my belief that the town is responsible for maintaining town sidewalks regardless. I mean, you could, it would be illegal and improper for us to ask budding landowners to do it. So, you're talking about that ordinance, I don't even think that's an, an option on the table. Um, but you're talking about state sidewalks as well?
Uh, some towns, I, yeah, I was talking about states. Some towns have, uh, that are, I'll give you a couple of that, too, 'cause it's a quick read. But that, uh, some towns make an, try to make an exclusion for the state. They make a distinction, not many, but some do, on state side, uh, state sidewalks, and say that, that's the state's responsibility, but the state isn't gonna take responsibility.
Sure, but I would think that would be the majority. So, I'm trying to figure out the percentage. Are you saying 58% of towns take care of state sidewalks?
Yeah. That's how I read the article, yeah. As well as town, you know, town and, and state. Some towns don't have, you know, like we have considerable state sidewalks, some towns have none or very, very little, so, very...
We'll continue this discussion on the 30th. That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the synopsis, Fred. And we did send that to, oh, selectmen.
Pardon?
We did send that to all the selectmen, that information.
Yeah.
I believe.
It looks like I have a $125 contract on there.
You believe?
Just on the list.
I didn't even notice that, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. We're gonna move on to refund of excess payments. Um, Brian is leaving the room because, um, his relative is on the list. So, Ben, would you like to, uh, make the motion for refund of excess payments?
Not if you wanna hear how I butcher everybody's name.
That's fine.
Brett Cutler's the first one.
There you go.
That's a easy one.
There you go, Fred. 2233, Brett Cutler.
Second?
Second by Kitch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ford Credit Personal Property Tax. Could I have clarification on that? 10963, personal property tax by Ford Credit, or is that motor vehicle property tax?
I don't, all I know is what's written here. I don't, all I know is what's written here.
I know, but that shouldn't be motor vehicle property tax, not personal property tax. There's a difference.
It's a separate discussion.
Sorry if I created a problem.
It's been seconded. I, I don't have an answer. If you don't want to vote on this, we don't have to.
I don't, I, I do not want to...
Okay, so I, I just seconded your motion so we could discuss it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to put it on the next agenda and find out why it says property tax, personal property tax. I think, do you agree with that, Fred?
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying. Could be a car ta, yeah.
Well, no, car tax and motor vehicle tax, there's a difference. And I'm just wondering why it's written that way.
It looks like a...
It could just be a mistake.
I don't have an answer.
Okay, so we'll...
So withdraw your motion, withdraw your second. Okay.
Withdraw.
Next.
Uh, what's that, Storo?
Storo.
Sal R. or Karen, fifty-five, forty-six.
Second.
Second by Kitch, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Floris Flood, Rachel A., one twenty-five, eighty-two.
Second.
Second by Kitch, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Pegalo?
Pegalo.
Pegalo, Matthew J., fifty-one, twenty-four.
Second.
Second by Kitch, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Johnny E. Tomzak and Lisa M. Tomzak, nineteen eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Alice C. Cohen, two hundred and sixty-three, ninety-eight.
Second.
Second by Kitch, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Rosemary...
Come on, you can do it.
Thomas Lexi.
Tomaszewski. Uh, and Jeffrey Tomaszewski, forty-eight, seventy-three.
Second.
Second by Kitch, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Ramira Junior, De...
De Sosa, De Sosa.
De Sosa? De Sosa?
Close enough.
Okay, and...
Weschler.
Weschler, Kristen H., thirty-five, hundred, eleven dollars and forty-one cents.
Second.
Second by Kitch, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Jessica Philbro, Tilb, Tilb, Tilbro, Tilbo, fifteen sixty-seven.
Second.
Second by Kitch, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. I have nothing on status and committee reports. Anybody else? Would anyone like to invite Mr. Flood to return?
Sure.
Tell them that one item was not approved.
Let him guess.
Dan, are you hiding in the back room?
Oh, Trudy, I had questions. I mean, we didn't want to interrupt anybody, so I'm like, yeah, I'll go talk there.
Good night, Trudy.
Did I walk into like an executive session?
No, no.
Five more minutes, five more minutes you may have.
Soon. Public, uh...
I'm mostly backed up.
Public comment?
Public comment.
Any other public comment tonight? Uh, informal discussion? I do know under follow-up items, Chief Shea is going to be coming to a future meeting to talk about the new opioid legislation. And we'll also be scheduling a Chatham Health District update. And I don't have any update, uh, the sidewalk ordinance will be on the thirtieth as well. We'll at least look at it.
Did I, is Dan going to be on the thirtieth, so for clarification?
Thirtieth.
When are, did we talk about that?
August.